But why don't we go ahead and hear about Susan Bell? I'd like to welcome Ms. Bell. I think most of you all know her. She's been helping the city out as a consultant since her retirement of, how many years at Arlington County?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years. All right, Jim, you got her. That's good. Jim's got 33 years at Arlington.
That's right.
That's right. So Susan, as you may recall, was a former zoning administrator of Arlington County, then head of what, community planning?
Community Planning, Housing and Development.
Yeah, so lots of experience, good experience in Arlington. And she's going to help us out with reviewing and revisiting our parking regulations. So, Mr. Shields, do you want to say anything, or should we just turn it on over to Susan?
Well, can I just say one thing? One, in my comments upstairs, just a moment ago, when I was talking about the staff support for the steering committee, I neglected to mention Susan Bell, who has been a key member of the team. And I apologize for that oversight. Everybody on the steering committee is fully aware of that. And of course, Lauren Bruce has also contributed a great deal to the work of the steering committee. The presentation tonight for the parking study, we've commissioned Susan to help us update our, ultimately, what we want to do is update our zoning regulations and how we regulate parking requirements for commercial development in the city. And the first step is to assess what best practices are and look at it just from a holistic perspective, and that's what tonight's report is. So there's no requested action item. This is for presentation and discussion. But then ultimately, where we want to take this effort is to, towards a zoning code amendment. There will be a more effective tool for us in regulating parking associated with commercial development. Jim, are there any other comments?
Well, I will say this is an ongoing effort. One of the reasons Susan was thought to be such a good candidate for this is she volunteered to do a lot of similar work in depth in growing county standards. And so, and we have since, she has gone, along with some of the staff folks, Akita Ruzi and others, has gone to several advisory groups. We've had work sessions with the Planning Commission, CACT, the EDA. Have we gone to the Architecture Advisory Board yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. But, so as this has gone forward, we have gotten input from them, and the presentation you're going to see is benefits from the input of those groups. We also have an intern who is doing parking counts this June and is wrapping those up. So we're going to be refining those. We've been going out to garages and looking at how things actually are at critical times. So Susan can explain that more, but we'll be developing a more detailed report on that as well to help supplement this other work, so.
Okay, with that, I'm going to get started, and I'll try and go through sort of the boilerplate fairly quickly, because I know you all have had a long evening. Essentially, what we're trying to address is the fact that the city's parking regulations, like the parking regulations around most communities around the Beltway, were developed when the pattern of development was largely auto-dependent and suburban in nature. And so one of the things that's happening around the Beltway is that neighboring jurisdictions are revising their zoning ordinances at a very, very high level of detail. And so as they are updating their regulations, incorporating best practices, and streamlining their processes, every jurisdiction that doesn't potentially puts themselves at a competitive disadvantage. Now, your current regulations do have some flexibility in parking, but it's not extensive, and it does, of course, require approval by the Planning Commission. So our initial focus is really on office and ground floor retail. We're looking at, you know, the sort of what is, comparing the regulations to nearby jurisdictions. So what are your competitors, what are your neighbors doing? And we're also looking at other studies and best practices, so we can get a better sense of what the existing inventory can, what can be done with the existing inventory to maximize it, and also to facilitate reductions in parking, because you don't want to reduce parking and suddenly move it just into your neighborhoods. That's not a solution by any means. And so we'll talk about some of the tools as we go through this. As Jim mentioned, Bill is collecting actual data on parking use, and we're going through that data now on a building-by-building level. What I'll share with you later this evening is some of the findings in a preliminary fashion. We'll have more detail, and he's actually preparing a report for not only the office and mixed-use projects, but for residential and hotel projects. So we'll have a good picture of parking use in the city by the end of the summer. We're also looking, and will be looking more deeply with the zoning staff, at how the process for evaluating requests actually proceeds, and drafting language ultimately after we've completed the fieldwork. We're about halfway through that six-to-nine-month process. So let's talk a little bit about the city. You all may not be aware of it, but in 2012, as a part of its Household Travel Survey Program, COG looked at the city, and there's some interesting statistics that come out. In addition to the sort of demographics about households and single-family and single-person households, 2% of your households have no car, 15% have three or more vehicles, and we'll hope that those are collectors of cars and not just large households. But you have quite good service. Buses are, virtually the entire city is within a mile of the metro, even if it's not an easy mile, as was talked about in the earlier presentations. You're still closer than a lot of other communities. But this data, I think, is also particularly important. Forty-two percent of the city's workers are arriving at their destination through a single-occupant vehicle trip. And while that may seem large, or may seem small to you, it's about the regional average. So you're not out of kilter with your neighbors in that regard. But interestingly enough, your bike mode share and your daily walk mode share are considerably higher. And given that the trail comes right through the city, you have the ability to ratchet that up even more over time, and perhaps through other means, increase the transit mode share. So those are some things that come back to 2012. But let's talk about your actual parking requirements today in the zoning ordinance. One per 300 square feet for your typical office. Professional office is one per 250, which is more restrictive. That would be four per 1,000 square feet. Your retail range is based on the type, and it is even further restrictive, one per 200 to one per 400. So that translates to a lot of parking, which may or may not be getting used. Your housing is actually based on the number of bedrooms. And that is a very dated standard, if I may say so, simply because...
You may not say so.
Oh, I may not say so. Well, in my judgment, it is a somewhat dated standard. It actually reflects the belief that every person occupying a bedroom is, in fact, a driver. And depending on whether you have large units, or Mingels, or whatever, that may or may not be the case. You can get quite a lot of parking that way. Your one-per-guestroom-for-your-hotel ratio, plus some number for employees, is pretty typical, although increasingly, hotel customers arrive via some type of shuttle, or through a rental car that may or may not stay there, but they tend not to come in their personal vehicles. Now, in the city's ordinance today, you have several options to help mitigate the code requirement. Off-site parking is one. It is permitted in any zoning district within 500 feet of a principal entrance to the structure. And this is really, you know, quite helpful. It allows a business that may be a little bit short to obtain parking nearby, arrange with the zoning administrator, and it's a very, it's a very good administrative process, and it has worked for a number of businesses. The second options are limited to the MUR, mixed-use redevelopment sites, and those are both parking reductions, which must have verifiable data associated with them, and alternate modes as a part of that, and then shared parking. And again, this is, I think, those are both forward-thinking, in the sense that they are looking at parking beyond just the boundaries of the property where the project is occurring, but looking at parking in a more holistic way. Some properties may have more than is needed, others may not. There are different use patterns to parking, and the staff do a good job of analyzing the use patterns when they have a mixed-use project, to figure out how parking can be shared, and what is a reasonable level of share to support. So how do those applications actually apply? Tax Analyst Building at 400 South Maple, 101, 102,000 square foot building. If they had built their parking per the code, they would have had to build 376 parking spaces. They requested and were granted a reduction of 13%, and so they were able to drop approximately 50 spaces. That may not seem like a lot, but as you'll hear further in the data discussion, there's even now, with the building largely occupied, quite a few spaces that are vacant, even in the peak of the business day. So that parking ratio at one per 314, the actual effective parking ratio with the reduction, is only slightly less than the one per 300, or one per 250. It's a 13% reduction, modest, but a good example. Now, approximately a year ago, the staff received a report from a contractor, this was also a joint project with the Council of Governments, that Jim and the staff worked to achieve a grant for. And this was a TDM study, which actually came in and was really focused on how you can manage demand for parking, how you can get, how can you get people where they need to go beyond the quarter-mile from a metro station? The quarter-mile being the sort of shorthand for the easy walk to transit. And they came up with a whole series of strategies, but what they were suggesting is that the city should target a mode share of 50% non-single-occupant vehicles. If you recall in the earlier slide, COG found 42% were single-occupant, 48, the opposite. They're suggesting that we, that the city worked to improve that non-SOV share for residents, and then for people coming into the city, trying to achieve it at a higher level of 40%. What that means is you would have to have onsite strategies, so that as people go to leave home, they're taking alternate modes to get to the city. So some of their recommendations were, in fact, to do a parking study, such as what we're doing now, to formalize a TDM policy, and the staff is working through some options there in draft, and they're discussing it internally. Talking about an employer services program, where you actually have staff who are specialists in the area of commuter services, going to job sites, working with large employers, to come up with plans to mitigate the use of parking onsite. One of the examples that I've shared with the other groups that we've talked with is the commuter store in Arlington. They have an entire program funded largely through grant money. And one of the major services that they provide is onsite work with large employers to develop marketing materials, to develop a kiosk, to develop information for people based on where they're coming from to the job site, to help them find alternate ways to get to work. So if you were to be in Arlington in the late afternoon, you'd find all sorts of commuter buses going to Fredericksburg, Leesburg, and all sorts of parts, east, north, and west, and south, because those are one of the major routes, or one of the major means that people use to avoid getting in their car on the interstate. Now, as you talk about future development in the city, I think we've all had various presentations about the proposal to redevelop 400 North Washington. And the project is proposing, or at least in its last iteration, proposed a parking ratio of one per 455, which may sound like a big reduction from the one per 300 that is in the code today. But they are proposing a number of measures onsite, and they're listed here on the slides. Garage management, tandem spaces for overflow. So these are additional spaces, and they would be managed by the onsite staff if they were needed. Bicycle storage onsite with lockers for people, so they can secure their bicycles during the day. Having a kiosk or monitor in the lobby of the building, so people can get updated information on buses, when buses are likely to arrive, how Metro's doing, whether Metro's a disaster that day or not. And then some dedicated carpool and vanpool spaces to facilitate the 16-passenger commercial van that comes up from Fredericksburg and the like. So let's talk about parking requirements and practices in nearby jurisdictions, because this gives you a little more context for where you are in relative terms. Arlington's metro corridor has predominantly special exception development. So if you look down at the third bullet, Special Exception Office, for many years has a ratio of one per 580, one per 580 square feet. That is actually policy. The ordinance is one per 530, but to simplify it, because one district had 580, pretty much all of the metro corridor's development that you're familiar with occurred at a one per 580. Now, substantial areas were completely discounted for parking, like the walking area of the mall at Bolston Common in Pentagon City. The entire DARPA building was actually bonus, but that's a separate conversation. But the point of all this is to suggest that for close to 25 years, your nearest neighbor has been using a ratio that's not quite 50% less, and actually getting reduced vehicle traffic on their streets. This is for office development. Granted, the buildings may be closer to Metro, but they're not all closer to Metro. And this is current policy, this is current practice, up until we did the Commercial Parking Task Force. Let's see, I retired in '11. We did it, I guess, in '13, and it got adopted in '14. And what we decided, and we had a citizen, industry, staff, working group, and we met for about six months and looked at actual usage of parking. And what we determined was that it was very area-specific, and that the larger buildings had the capacity to do more extensive onsite management than the smaller buildings. They just had more critical mass. And so while it may seem counterintuitive, in the most dense zoning districts in Arlington, both in the Jefferson-Davis and Roslyn-Bolston corridor, we ended up with a policy parking ratio of one per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. Historically, that would have been considered a warehouse kind of parking requirement, but that's actually a pretty fair one, given the way that the property owners are managing and proposing to manage their parking. In the less dense areas of the Roslyn-Bolston corridor, and in East Falls Church, we did a more minor adjustment. East Falls Church, we recommended that the board stay with one per 580, which had been the longstanding policy. The rest of the ARB corridor, other than Roslyn in its core, is one per 630. And this was based on a survey of actual buildings done over a period of time by a contractor to the county. And really, what we found was, there was an extensive amount of parking that was vacant. It never exceeded 75% occupancy in any of the buildings. And every one of the buildings that had been approved in the last 13 years had some level of parking reduction. No one was building the code. Even in Sherrlington, which doesn't have underground parking, but has all-surface parking with its access to I-395, they're not building the one per 580, they're building more parking, but that will change as additional development occurs in the vicinity. It's largely built out, though, now. So one per 580 is your closest neighbor. Now Tysons, I would, I would never suggest that the development that the Tysons plan will bring is analogous to the kind of development that you are likely to see here, but just to point out, that even in 2009, prior to the adoption of the Tysons plan, the parking ratio was one per 385. So Fairfax County was anticipating parking that was still less than what you're expecting here. They have now modified their requirements under the Tysons plan to require extensive three-part demand management. So first and foremost, an implementation plan to manage demand at the, at the building. Ongoing monitoring, which Arlington also has, to verify that not only are the tools being put into place, but in point of fact, that they're working. And then if there are failures, if leases offsite are not working, if tenants are doing reserved parking in ways that are limiting access for other occupants of the building, et cetera, then there is a commitment built into that TDM plan that requires the county and the building owner to address it. So they're not going to just let it fester and become an issue. The ratios under the Tysons plan are based on distance from Metro, which is a pretty interesting concept. It's pretty well documented that people will walk readily one-quarter of a mile. It's a little less so for one-quarter to one-half. And beyond that, it's a little bit dicey whether people will walk. But in their adopted plan, there are no parking minimums within a half-mile of Metro. They have maximum ratios, which is a new technique that's being adopted in some communities as opposed to minimums or a range. And their basic maximum is one per 455. So that is about 50% less than what your ratio is expecting today. If you're not in a transit-oriented, a development location, but still within Tysons, it's one per 500. So it's still less at the minimum, and at one per 417, the maximum is further, is further reduced. So the management of parking demand is pretty extensive in their, in their plan. It's everything from the shared parking that you have, and joint use of excess parking, to creating parking management entities across property lines, variety of agreements, even including stepping into managing pricing, which is something that most communities are not prepared to do, Arlington has never been prepared to do. Unbundling parking from leases, which is often difficult for some tenants to accept, because it, it puts a different spin on parking for their, for their workers. Smart parking technology, this is being adopted in the Tysons garages, it's happening in Sherrlington, and a variety of places, which basically lets you know where the spaces are, how many are available, so you reduce the circulating of cars. And then preferred parking, as I mentioned earlier, for Arlington and for 400's proposal, 400 North Washington, for carpools, vanpools, and car-sharing services. And that's a fairly new technique. You typically see the car-sharing services on the street. You're starting to see them now in residential building garages and in office buildings. In some cases, the fleet's being operated and owned by the building owner. So that's a further assurance for someone in the building, that if you take transit, you've got a guaranteed ride home in the case of an emergency. Now Fairfax did reserve any reductions from those ratios that I mentioned just a minute ago to the Board of Supervisors. So it is not an administrative process. Alexandria is also looking at their ordinance. They chose to start with multifamily. They're ways out yet from doing their office review, but what I wanted to point out to you is some of the techniques that they are also using for their residential, because they're similar to the ones that are being used for office and can be adapted to both types of development. Again, it's unbundling, the preferred spaces, the management plan, transit and bike-share contributions. Fairfax, I don't believe, is taking contributions yet for a bike-share program. That's pretty standard in Arlington, and Alexandria's doing the same thing, trying to extend the bike-share program into the city. They also have a pretty extensive program on residential parking, as does Arlington. So just again, here's some ratios to give you an idea. Their one per 450 to one to 600 is based largely on proximity to Metro. It is, they are done in districts, similar to what we ended up doing in Arlington. And as you can see, their ratio is considerably lower today than your office requirement. So what are the implications? If you want to just talk about the cost, developers are spending, and these are averages, anywhere from $22,000 per parking space to $45,000. And the $45,000 is for several levels of underground. I have seen estimates as high as $70,000 when blasting is involved, or there's extensive rock work that has to be done. And while this dollar amount doesn't translate to money in the city's coffers, it is a cost-avoidance opportunity for a project. If a developer doesn't have to build X number of parking spaces, that's that amount that they don't have to finance, that may make that project that much more feasible. And in an office market that is suffering, as it is in this region today, it may help turn the corner for a project that's, you know, not quite sure if they have to build all that parking. So here's a comparison of how the Tax Analyst Building would have shaped up under the different ratios. The ratio that they were approved at was one per 314, and that was with the 13% reduction allowed in your ordinance. At the East Falls Church ratio, they would have had to build 176 instead of 324 spaces. At Tysons, it would have been 224, and in Alexandria, the same. So you can see that the savings is potentially several million dollars, depending on the type of parking and the number of spaces. So here's some factors to consider. With your ratio, it is, as I've probably hammered more than I should have, it is considerably higher than what your neighbors are doing. There are many factors that drive parking demand, and I think some of that is being reflected in the usage data that we're working on now. In 2011, GSA did some analysis of about office space, because they were under an executive order to reduce office space usage per employee. And they started with their own building, but the average that they're using, and it's not just for federal employees, is about 190 per person. We know that in this region particularly, there's considerably more telework happening and hoteling, and many large employers are doing that as a way of managing their office costs. Couple of examples are Deloitte and Accenture in Arlington. Both of them have officially thousands of employees at work sites where they house on any given day, a fraction of maybe 20% of their workforce, because they're on the road, they're with clients, they're at client sites. Many places are doing alternative work schedules to help mitigate the pressure of the longer commutes that people have. I know when I had my inspectors coming in from places like Newmarket, Virginia, and Newmarket, Maryland, and York, Pennsylvania, getting them off the road one day a week was often the reason that they were willing to stay, because while they could make more money working in an urban jurisdiction, it's incredibly hard on people with the commutes that they have today, and the commutes are getting longer. So external factors do drive demand for parking, and they include everything from, you know, the cost, the time, the reliability and availability of options. But you can help people know about the convenience, to know about the options, with some of the things done at the worksite that I referred to earlier. This was some analysis that was done for Arlington as a part of the commuter site efforts and the mobility lab work that is done. And TDM measures really can make a difference, but they work, I have here that they only work where parking is not oversupplied. I think what I would say is they work best, and they make the greatest impact where parking is not oversupplied. And these are a range of things that we've, that I've mentioned already. One of the ones that I haven't talked about, and most jurisdictions are not doing, is pushing employers to cover some of the transit costs. The federal government does that. Some of the local governments in the region do it. Some large employers will do it, but it's expensive. But even without the assistance or the subsidy to use of transit, some of these other programs can go a long way to facilitating getting people out of their cars, reducing traffic, and reducing the parking demand at the, at the worksite. Here's some additional examples. All of these have been tested and tried in a variety of jurisdictions, just in Northern Virginia, without even looking at what the Maryland jurisdictions are doing, or the district. So with that, I want to just turn to the use data that we're working with, and caveat this information as very draft. One of the things we want to check is that the field numbers and the, the numbers of what were approved and expected to be built are, in fact, the same. So what this sheet actually depicts are office projects largely, and as you can see, if you look at the various columns, the observed spaces were the, the number that were counted. And we have residential data, but a couple of those garages are actually under renovation, and so that data's got to be reworked. Economic development provided, building occupancy information. So this is not information that the staff developed, looking at directories or anything. This came out of, I believe, the CoStar database. The weekday peak percentage reflects counts that were taken on several weekdays at 9:00 a.m. and 12:30, and then the averages calculated over the several days that the counts were done. We also did weekend counts and 7:00 p.m. counts. And as you can imagine, the use in most of the buildings changes dramatically at those times. But let's focus on the weekday peak, if we can. And as you look down that... And as you look down that column, you can see quite a range. 400 North Washington is the existing building, which is largely empty as they, I guess, work their way toward making a permanent filing or a final filing. But even at the 50% or 43% occupancy, only a quarter of their parking is used on any given day, at least of the days of the survey. Tax analysts and the Flower Building, the counts were considerably higher, but they still reflect occupancy of the parking that was considerably under 100%, even though the buildings themselves are largely occupied. So that reflects that there is capacity, I would say, to reduce the required parking because what this is showing is that even in a full building, at a variety of times during the workday, the spaces were not in use. Now this 76.8% for the Flower Building did not take into account that they have a share with the Hilton Garden Inn. So when we go back and capture that, the number will actually drop. The actual occupancy percentage will drop at the peak. So that's really what I mainly wanted to communicate to you. We will have a final report on this that will include more than just the commercial buildings. It will also include the residential. But so far, the data implies that for all use types, we have excess capacity in the parking. Given that it's free and people can share and there's not towing, that may not be a problem per se. But as you go forward, I think it is worth a look to see if a reduction isn't in order. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that very thorough report. Are there questions, comments? Mr. Snyder?
Yeah. This is a very important issue. Hopefully, we can revisit it, other than at 10:45 in the evening when we've just been dealing with a huge project. But this is very, very important. I've been told over the years by developers that part of what's driving the development model we have, which is commercial on the first floor and four or five stories of residential, is the parking requirements. So I'm glad we're addressing that. So I think this is a very important issue, and I look forward to recommendations to adjusting our parking requirements to allow us to be more competitive for commercial uses. The second point is, we've got a huge amount of asphalt out there in surface parking. And I'm hoping that perhaps as a secondary outcome from this look, we're going to figure a better way to manage that than we're managing it. Because it's counterproductive. It uses a huge amount of space, very unproductively, and frankly, it's ugly. So those would be a couple of the points that I'd make. I think this is very good. I'll be thinking about it a lot. And the next time it comes up, hopefully, it'll be earlier in the evening, and you'll give us some specific recommendations. Here's what we ought to do. And I'd like to move forward on this as fast as possible.
Okay. Others?
Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me. So I guarantee you that if you handed this sheet of paper to 10 people in City Falls Church, not one of them would guess that the Flower Building parking lot is 25% empty during the weekday peak. I guarantee you that. And I bring that up just because it's amazing, the difference in the world that you described, the better way that we are headed towards, and the reality that people here see now. I mean, it's, you know, I'm proud and privileged to be serving at a time when I can be on the bleeding edge of innovation on this issue. Because, you know, we just need, if we really believe everything that you say, we just need to do it. Well, we sort of did it with Kensington, and we'll see how that works. We're already getting beat up, you know, not enough parking, you know, it's not going to work, whatever. And, you know, Mason Rose, the same thing. Every time we go out in the community, it's like, oh, my God, not going to have enough parking in this thing, or going to be parking in my neighborhood. I mean, we just have to have the fortitude to wave your presentation at people and say, you know what, we're going to try a different way. I mean, I remember when I worked at CQ back in the early 80s, we were doing transit subsidies and showers and bike racks and all that stuff. And I didn't realize how progressive we really were. But, and induced me to ride the Metro for the first, you know, 15 years that I lived in Falls Church. But I mean, yeah, I agree with what Mr. Snyder said. We need specific recommendations. But, you know, the 400 North Washington office buildings, another example. I mean, we just need to prove the darn thing. The only thing that's holding it up is the concern about parking it. And the concern is that it's not going to, the parking scheme that they're proposing is going to not work, and the neighbors are going to give us you-know-what because there's parking on their residential street. Well, you know, we're just not going to know until we build a couple of these buildings and try to force the kind of behavioral change. The other thing to close, that you would get 10 of 10 people failing on, is what was said there earlier tonight, that Arlington's traffic counts have gone down in spite of the densification of the county. People just don't believe that. They cannot believe it. But it's true. Anybody who's driven out Wilson Boulevard over the last 25 years knows that. So I applaud everything you've done. I've heard your presentation. I always want to, like, come down and, you know, join the club when you're finished. But I think at some point, we're just going to need to say, you know, we're going to take what you're advising, we're going to apply it to this project, and we're going to approve this project, and we're going to catch flak from the neighbors around it, and it's going to be okay. In four or five years, it's going to be just fine.
All right. Other comments? I've got a few. If nobody, Jim, do you have something to say?
Well, I think one of the exciting potentials of this is that, as a companion to changing the code, there are some technical things we can do with, you know, better spaces in the garages, so that columns are better located and we don't have, it's better to have good spaces than more spaces that are not easily used. The idea of promoting smart garages and doing some trade-offs of, if I don't build so many spaces, I can provide bike share, I can provide these other things that are cost-effective because I'm not building much, spaces aren't going to get used. So I think it's these things in concert with one another where we can provide some alternatives, some actual transportation advances as opposed to just more car storage. And I think people will welcome some tweaks to the code in terms of how parking garages are designed. We've heard a lot of those complaints, how they're lit, the idea that you can have a smart garage where you can know where to go look for the vacant space. So technology is helping us in that regard, and I think the combination could be very exciting for folks. And maybe offset some of the criticism.
Ms. Conley?
Thanks, Susan. My question is about parking meters and how they work in having a parking authority in Arlington, how that works in concert with the garage parking related to office buildings.
Arlington actually doesn't have a parking authority. They have metered virtually every inch of the street that they can. And now they're doing the gang meters, which actually allows you to put more cars on the street. But those parking spaces are largely thought of as convenience parking. You know, for somebody who's doing a retail transaction, running into a bank, picking up lunch, dry cleaning, things like that, not long-term. And I believe the parking rate just went up to $1.50 an hour, which was a long fight to get to, I'm pretty sure. But it was $1.25 for a long, long time. And these different technologies, including the Park Mobile app, that people can, you know, adjust on their phones and the, you know, there's a variety of techniques to make the meters work better. But they work well together because the idea is that the garage parking is for longer-term parking, not so much for the convenience parking. Because, you know, you want the in-and-out spaces to be more accessible.
Right. So that, I'm just wondering if that kind of convenience parking makes the garage parking work better?
I'm sure that it helps.
Right.
But you're moving thousands of people in and out of those spaces, in the garages, as well as on the street in a given day. At various points in time for construction, there are hundreds of spaces taken out of service. So, I mean, I think they do work well together. But I don't think you have to meter the spaces for the garage parking to work.
Okay. And then my other question is just related to the Flower Building, where I used to park every day, but now I don't anymore, and I'm so happy. Part of the problem with that building is that the post office is there and the, there's, it's the uses of the offices. There's a testing center where people come and park for the whole entire day, some days and not other days. And I'm sure that that's taken up as you're looking at different retail uses. But is there a way to account for that, the actual use of the building? Because the post office needs 10 minutes spaces.
Right. I think that probably the way to address it for the future would be in some sort of a tenant parking management plan, so that if you're going to have a parking reduction, that also means you're going to have to commit to how you lease those spaces up, you know, the kinds of tenants, the kinds of transactions, you know, because certainly medical fits into the same category where there's just a different demand for spaces and it's very staff-intensive. So the owner of the building or the landlord, whoever it is that's managing the tenant leasing, needs to work with the staff on those kind of things so that they're not creating problems. I mean, that garage also doesn't connect level to level. So the frustration when you're going around, I'm sure, is unbounded.
So I've got a couple of comments before we get out of here. One, I would say that I think it's important to look at regulation stickers for the areas immediate adjacent to some of these areas. Because if you make it, the parking very tight or difficult to use, then I think people have a tendency to just go park on the street right outside the building. And so I think what Arlington's done to be successful is not give residential parking stickers to people in apartment buildings. And so they have to, it's unbundled, so they have to pay $150 a month for a parking space, but then they can't just go park on the street. Because if you just park on the street, I guarantee there's a whole bunch of people just going to park on the street every night. And that's going to lead to a new set of frustrations. So I think you ought to give some consideration, some kind of zones immediately about in these areas where we're talking about some innovative parking aspects, otherwise that'll just be the relief valve. If you unbundled parking, Mason Rose, $150 for a parking space, guess what? Some guy's going to park a block away every single night and save $150. And so we've got to figure out that solution, not to create a new problem by solving one. Two, I would just caution you, your June numbers are probably influenced maybe by 10% of people on vacation. You know, and so in other words, if you're going to use those and come back and say, this is the right number, they're 189 instead of 200. It may be, in fact, in October, you're at 200, just because people are on vacation during the summer. So I'd say give you, you know, your actual data you surveyed. I would say, give a little bit of thought to the fact that there's going to be some absences in the summer, you're not going to have the rest of the year.
We actually did these before school was out.
Oh, you did? I thought it was June.
Well, it was June, but it was early June.
Okay.
Specifically to avoid that problem.
Okay, great. I like the idea of the three-tier approach where not only do you have a plan, but you basically hold the developer's feet to the fire after approval to say, look, you're not doing this, and we've got to have some kind of hammer to do that. You're not going to get your blob, or your bond's not going to be, or whatever it might be. But I think we need to have some sort of tool to require them to continue to change things. We absolutely need to get more sophisticated TDMs. I mean, just like raise the bar dramatically. If you're going to talk about the kind of reductions you're talking about, we need to really have some interesting things, even as a transit for the whole city. Electronic bus stops, you know, somebody can walk out the door, know when the bus is going to arrive, not just sit out there in 100-degree weather hoping a bus will turn up eventually. I'd like to see some of these things kind of more holistic in the city. Bike share, better connections to Metro. Something to do in Arlington, which I think is kind of a neat idea, is they make, as you know, developers in new buildings oftentimes buy fare cards
Right.
for new occupants of the building, either commercial or residential, as a way to kickstart them into using the Metro. And I think it's a pretty good idea for starters, just buy a card for somebody, and they actually want you to put like 50 bucks or whatever they're asking for now on the card. But I think even just having a fare card is a pretty good idea. I would echo the ideas about the columns as well. I mean, you just can't, people will not park in a garage where you got the Flower Building with an orange-yellow column. It's just, it's awful. We should not let that happen. You know, I'd really like to see going forward some real standards where we will not allow column space to be considered part of the space.
I agree.
So maybe that can be part of whatever you're going to.
Change, yeah.
Yeah, no, we have that in the draft that we're working on.
Okay. How about compact versus full-size? Any discussion about that?
We haven't really focused on it. The one example I'm familiar with is Arlington, and they've, most familiar with, I should say, they've reduced the allowable compact considerably because people stuff anything into an available space.
What's, how does it work in Falls Church? Do we have a, what percentage do we allow?
I don't think there's a compact ratio.
We don't allow any compact? They're all just full-size?
But one of the problems is, I think it's, you know, it's like Susan said, people with small cars have no problem parking those spaces.
Yeah, I got it.
Big cars, you know.
I got it.
It's just very hard to make it work. And so you're better off with standardized spaces that are well-designed, that can easily, where you don't tear your door off, your mirror off.
So do we have that? What do we have in the city?
I think it's eight and a half.
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller than a full-size space, but not as small as a compact space.
So I don't know if you're going to give some thought to that as well, but I think that's relevant to this whole discussion.
The main thing is the columns.
Yeah.
That is where you really lose a lot of functionality.
Pulling them back from the drive aisle and not allowing them within the space itself.
Yeah. So I think you're on the right track. I would, as others have said, like to see some actual concrete recommendations, particularly low-hanging fruit. You know, in terms of pushing the envelope to the nth degree, maybe that's not our next step. Maybe the next step is an incremental step, that instead of two parking spaces for a two-bedroom, it's 1.5. Or something that's kind of a measure to see how it works, because I'm a little concerned, we may go from eight to the one step, and that may be too much to bite off. And maybe a better way is to go sort of a half-step and see how that works out, get some more data, and then move towards kind of a more fuller process. Anyway, that's all I got. Anybody else have anything, or should we wind this show up?
Susan mentioned car sharing. I think that has real potential, particularly on the sustainability side. The average cost to own a car and payments, you know, $900 to $1,000 a month. There are a lot of young people who are saying, you know, I'm going to save that money and do something else. If you have shared vehicles that are plugged in and they're clean, and they have a home every night, and that's transportation in the most convenient spot, it's like having, you know, your own Uber taxi there, except you get to drive it. That's actual transportation, and that could take place of several sub-basement $50,000 spaces. That's basically car storage. That's all parking really is, is car storage. It's not being used, it's unused storage. So providing transportation, whether it's bike share or car sharing or a bus shelter, all those things are actual transportation. And, you know, reducing it down so we have comfortable parking but not excess parking will afford us the ability to have transportation improvements that I think people will use if they know how to use them and they're available on-site.
Dave, do you have something?
Yeah. I mean, there are a bunch of different components to this. I mean, one of them is the people that live here. Another one is the people that work here. But another one is, the fact of the matter is that most of the people access our businesses via cars, right? That's just the way it is. So how do we balance all those things?
Well, one thing I will say that's interesting is, for example, when we were doing the testing for the two grocery stores, half the population of the city, in both cases, like 6,000 people, it was in a half-mile walk of the front door of both those grocery stores.
But the whole objective with our commercial site is to get people that live outside the city to access it. So how do we?
Well, it's a couple of things. In other words, if you can get more neighbors and we have a more walkable community who do that, those spaces that need to be there for people who are coming from outside are more available. So it's all of those things together.
Yeah, I would like to see, as part of maybe what you're proposing, some really sophisticated ideas for TDM. Like, I think we really need to raise the bar, like we haven't done before, on car share, bike share, you know, just a lot of these things that can really allow us to entice developers with lower parking ratios, at the same time, not create new parking problems for our community. So that's my two cents. Anything else, Ms. Oliver?
I just wanted to add that if we are going to do something where we allow the parking to be reduced, and we want to avoid pushing a lot of traffic onto the streets, and we, maybe we say that if you live in the apartment building, you don't get a sticker. But I also think that, as a city, we need to think about whether we're prepared to be bold enough to limit the stickers that we're going to prepare to give to a household, or make it very costly to have those additional cars. So that you don't just hold on to that third car and that fourth car and leave it on the street because, you know, you have it, and it's, but if getting the third parking sticker costs you a lot more, you know, then that's another reason why you might say, okay, it's not worth it to hold on to this old car. Because I see within my neighborhood, a lot of cars that sit for a lot, a lot of the time.
Okay. I think there's a lot of innovative ways.
And personal property tax. I think, I personally think that it would be very radical if the percentage of your personal property tax on your car went up with each vehicle that you had to register per household.
So.
Anything else as should we wind down this conversation? Susan, great job. We look forward to it. Let's try to get a date certain of when you're going to come back and see us, because I don't want this just fall by the wayside. I think frankly, it's entirely relevant for projects that are coming up, Mason Row or whatever, coming down the Pike. The TDM kind of stuff, the parking stuff, we ought to be launching now or in the near future, so.
We have Susan on about four projects, so.
Well, we ought to expedite this. It's totally relevant we're doing it. Okay, that, thank you so much. The TDM kind of stuff, the parking stuff, we ought to be launching now or in the near future, so I think...
We have Susan on about four projects, so...
Well, we ought to expedite this. It's totally relevant we're doing it. Okay, that, thank you so much. There are any schedule comments from council members at all? Anybody have anything? Okay, sure.
Can we, could we add a closed session next week, July 13th, to discuss employee reviews for the city clerk, city attorney, and city manager?
We can. The only thing I was going to say for schedule is, you've got a whopper of a meeting coming up on the 13th.
I know, I'm looking at that. Could we do it the following week then, the 20th?
That'd be, I think that would probably be easier on you, that, because you're going to have probably your fullest agenda, probably in the last two years, coming up on the 13th. Now, a lot of the things are not super controversial, but there's just a lot of things that are going to be on the agenda.
Got that walking tour on the 20th?
We do have the walking tour that's planned on the 20th. We're going to talk about that tomorrow morning at the mayor's meeting. And I've invited Paul Stoddard to that meeting at 8:30, so we can sort of talk through the logistics of it.
Well, what does everybody think? This is...
I think it's totally appropriate to do in a closed session, and I'm happy to do as soon as you want to schedule it.
Well, I'm happy to do it on the 20th. If you think the 13th is too full, I'm happy to do it on the 20th. We have on the 27th the compensation resolution, so we have to do it before then.
Well, the most important thing is that everybody's in a good mood when...
Right. [laughing] I am traveling on business next week, so I would appreciate having it on the 20th.
Okay. Let's do that. Can we add that on the 20th?
Sure.
And it can either be before or after. I guess after is better.
After's better.
Yeah. And then my second request is actually to the EDO, and that is, with our new tax rates and conversations about the Kensington coming up, can we just have an updated explanation of Kensington's effect on the city's revenues?
I'd be happy to. I mean, one thing I would just say, the Kensington has one of the highest tax yields per acre of any project in the city, and so we can send out that data that was presented at the time that it was approved.
That would be good, just based upon, in light of questions that have arisen in the last couple of days, and I could not pull it out of my head, I knew that, but it would be nice to have some facts provided, so that we can respond to those questions. Thank you.
Following on that, if I may, the question that you answered, that was posed by the citizen on the blog, I ask you, Wyatt, if you had responded to the citizen directly, but the question is, if anybody reading the news wants to know the very satisfactory answer that you gave him, how do we get that out to the world?
Can we follow up after this meeting? I do recall your email and...
Okay. Sometimes when questions are posed on online forum, the schools, for instance, will go online and answer the question, because it's an easily answerable, cut-and-dried question. Sometimes, O-COM has done that on City Questions, since it's just another instance of that. So, Wyatt answered a question in a personal email, and that's great, but the question is, does that get disseminated to the whole community? How do we get that information out?
Anything else? I've just got two things, quickly. One, Ingrid, is her last name Racine?
Yeah.
Is it possible we could get her to come back and follow up on what she was going to be doing over the past six months or so? I personally haven't seen that much of the product. I'd like to kind of see what she's done and where she's heading, and follow up on kind of our last discussion, maybe in an upcoming meeting.
One thing I will say is that she has been helpful to us in her, we've been reaching out to developers for the school site, you know, just to get information to them, to let them know that the RFP is coming and what we're looking for, and she's been very helpful to us in that. And a good deal of her effort, aside from sort of smaller projects, is to get the website, which would be kind of the key part of the marketing program done, and that's scheduled to be completed in September. So those are just a couple of things, but we can bring her here for a fuller discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to see some deliverables, and sort of what I was thinking was going to be coming, and so if we can maybe try to get a schedule for those and start seeing what's going to be the output, I think that'd be helpful, at least for me. And then also, lastly, I know we did a card for Nader, if maybe we could talk tomorrow about doing something else, like a little bit nicer or more substantive for him, a gift basket or something like that. That's a pretty major surgery, I think he went through.
You think he's missing his snacks?
Yeah. Well, we can do that. We give him a bunch of those little horrible crackers or whatever he eats, but anyway, I'd like to do something maybe a little bit more, if we could, for him, but we could talk about that tomorrow morning.
And who has the card?
It's right here.
All right, is there anything else, or should we go ahead and adjourn? Okay, we'll stick around. All right. Take care, everybody.